Do you solemnly swear that you will uphold the Constitution and statutes of the United States and the State of Tennessee, and that as a school board member of the City of Clinton, you will faithfully execute the office to which you have been elected?
I will.
If you compete after me on this. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will perform with fidelity.
That I will perform with fidelity.
The duties of a member of the Clinton City School Board.
The duties of a member of the Clinton City School Board.
Of education.
Of education.
The office to which I have been elected.
The office to which I have been elected.
And which I am about to assume.
And which I am about to assume.
By the authority vested in me by the citizens of Clinton City and the State of Tennessee, I declare these board members, this board member, to be duly elected.
Thank you.
Yay! Hey Jamie, get a quick picture of them together. Get a quick picture of them together. Hey Lori, stand by Scott Burton and let you all get a picture together. Make sure it's centered, Jamie.
Yeah, make sure it's centered.
Thank you all, I'm sorry I was late.
You're good, thank you Scott.
And Lori, welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on, first item up on our agenda is to approve our agenda as presented. Does anyone have any changes to the agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Give them a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next up is our recognition.
It is, so it is January, and in January, of course, we celebrate School Board Appreciation Week. And so at this time, I'm going to ask Leigh Anne, Abby, and Monica to come up, but we have a small token of our appreciation for each one of you. I know that each one of you volunteers your time. This is not a paid position, and it comes with quite a bit of commitment. And we know that you are just here to serve the students. So the students have made a little something special for you to show our appreciation for all you do for Clinton City Schools. So at this time, you all come up and present our wonderful board with their appreciation gifts.
See Lori, your first time, and we're already giving you gifts.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you. That's okay, thank you.
More courage, Derek.
Oh, thank you, it really was.
I hear you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, I'm glad to be here.
You're welcome, thank you.
The only thing that I know is that Dr. Bible Monica is sincerely hoping that there's something glitter-filled in his, in his bag.
I repeatedly request no gift.
I, I enjoy those presents for weeks after I get them.
I think there's still some glitter in his garage from about three years ago.
Well, thank you all so much. Moving on to our consent agenda, I'll entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda.
So will.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to our financial report with Mr. Ray.
Sure, the agenda has October, November, and December. I don't have December available, so I'll give you October and November. Now, I'm going to just start with November because October is wrapped up in November. Local revenues are coming in as budgeted. I don't anticipate any big issues there. State revenues that are shared are coming in as anticipated. I don't expect any differences there. The BEP funding, which is our major state funding, is coming in as expected. Nothing exciting to report on our revenues. Expenditures, I'll draw your attention to page two of the November General Purpose School Fund Financial Statement. When we laid out our budget, we put $1,027,000 into transfers out. And our intent at that time was to pay off a loan that we are responsible for, for the Clinton Elementary Edition. In lieu of doing that, we've decided to continue on with the South Clinton Elementary Edition. So we won't be paying that note off early. We use those funds to pay for the South Clinton Elementary School Edition. We have approximately, we will have, once the audit comes out, approximately $5.4 million in fund balance. As of, as of November 30th, we had approximately $4.3 million in cash. You can't spend fund balance, but you can spend cash. The differences in those two numbers are some accrued revenues that are on the balance sheet, haven't hit cash yet. So all that being said, we have the fund balance, the cash, the cash flow, and the anticipated revenues to pay for South Clinton's addition in its entirety. So next month, I will adjust that transfers out and add capital expenditures to the budget to recognize the $2 million, $2,012,000 for South Clinton Elementary Expansion. That's pretty much the highlights of the, of the General Purpose School Fund. The next section for November would be your federal projects. See a better cash flow coming in on federal projects. Everything's been approved through the state. For a while there, they had some grants that they said, "Go ahead and start spending the money," and they didn't really have a format for us to get everything approved. Well, they've done everything they need to do, so we can do everything we need to do and get that cash flow coming in. Remember, all our federal projects are reimbursement grants. We spend the money on an approved program, and then we get reimbursed. The next section would be your cafeteria fund. Right now, we're at a approximately $50,000 surplus, and we're five months of 12 in operating. We used to say 10 for cafeteria, but it seems like we're running food service all year now. So I anticipate with the increased reimbursements from the USDA, that we should probably fall out with $100,000 surplus in the cafeteria fund. That being said, we are issuing an RFP for our food service management contract. We are in year five of five. That contract is adjusted every year based on the Consumer Price Index. And if you've all been watching the news, you understand that we have some serious inflation. I think the biggest increase in 40 years. What that means is the biggest increase for a certain period of time, month over month. I think it was between 6% and 7%. It's going to be even worse for Consumer Price Index for food, which is the index that... So, that being said, we do want to go ahead and build up that fund balance in cafeteria to get ready for some higher costs down the road. I will say the USDA is probably ahead of the game. That doesn't happen often, but I think they're being fairly proactive, so, which is a good thing. I will pat them on the back. Any questions thus far? To be my recommendation that you approve the October and November financial statements as presented.
All right, we have a recommendation for Mr. Ray. Any further questions or comments for Mr. Ray? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve October and November financial statements as presented.
So will.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, Kim, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes.
Yes.
Tim Bobble.
Yes.
Molly Cross.
Yes.
Joey Smith.
Yes.
Curtis Smith.
Yes. Motion carries. Moving on to Budget Amendment Number Four.
Everybody should have a memo for Budget Amendment Number Four. I'll just go over the highlights. In General Purpose School Fund, we've had approximately $14,000 in, I'm sorry, $54,000 in donations. That's going to be used, $50,000 to support some student needs, and $4,600 is a U Trust grant that we usually get every year for staff retention. U Trust is the trust that we pay in lieu of paying state unemployment tax or state unemployment pay-as-you-go. We just, just use the U Trust. It's been a good relationship thus far. The increased bank charges, $10,000, that kind of hurt me to write that. I don't like paying bank fees. But we had an issue, and we had to engage our bank in an extra activity, extra on our end and extra on their end, and of course, there's a fee associated with that. The cost of not doing it outweighs this $10,000 increase.
Basically, we had someone defraud a check, and it got through, through Regent's Bank, but it was a fraudulent check out of Colorado, I believe. And so Scott did this as an added precaution, and it just put some extra safety measures into place to make sure that if it's not our check, it doesn't go through. So that's the cost of that. And thankfully, he did that because they tried to do a second fraudulent check that this actually protected us from. And it was actually in one of our federal program, federal program accounts, which we, you don't ever want it to happen, but you certainly don't want to mess with federal, federal funds as well. So we put that into place, and thankfully, we did. We caught the second one, and since they've caught the second one, there has not been a third one. So this is money well-spent to ensure that there's no fraudulent activity in any of our accounts.
Evidently, with the federal funds, leave free flow of money, having $3 million with the bank isn't as powerful as it used to be. Meaning, we have $3 million with them, that doesn't mean anything. It's not a negotiating tool. Their cash flow is not a problem. They can get money from the Fed, loan it out, they don't need our money. It's actually the opposite, almost cost them more to be custodians of our funds. So, but I am investigating ways to trim that down. So, that's a matter of pride, I don't like paying bank fees, so.
Scott, is this a yearly charge that we'll see?
It's a, it's a monthly charge. I just estimated $10,000 would be the worst-case scenario. We already have some money in there for bank fees, but it was about 900. Usually, our bank fees are about $300 or $400 a month. In October and November, they were $900 a month. So, there's some things that we can do to trim that down. I'm being, I figured if I'm annoying enough, they'll just give me my way. So, as you all know, I can be annoying, so.
He was annoying enough to where the bank absorbed that cost of the fraudulent check, and we did not pay any funds towards fraudulent activity.
They didn't want to cover that.
They didn't want to cover the check?
I was like, and if they didn't, I would, I would have started my own bank. I would have just spiked. So, yeah, they did cover it, though. They did the right thing. I guess they went with policy, but...
Scott convinced him otherwise.
Showed them the error of their ways.
We have any idea how it happened? I mean...
Well, I mean, it was a good job. I'll give it to them. If they put that much effort into it honestly, then they could probably do quite well. But they got a hold of a check probably from somebody in the mail or worked in an office somewhere that had a check from us, and they copied the signature. And I guess with technology nowadays, you can, I mean, they missed a few things. But, yeah, it happened, they really, they went to the well twice, which surprised me. But I'm really glad we did this because...
We caught the second one before it ever happened.
I don't think it would have been out $3,000 or $4,000, and really, there's nothing you can do about it.
Were they able to determine who, or in attempt to cash it?
I think that's one of those sweet spots where it's like credit card bad debt, it's just not worth fraudulent charges. There's a certain amount that they're just willing to write off, and they don't go after it, which is unfortunate because it encourages that type of activity. But I guess they've got people smarter than I to figure out actuarially exactly what number they will go after, so. But to answer your questions, and how they have indicated. That's one of the reasons, you know, I wanted to do this. It's called positive pay. Every time we issue a check, I have to send the bank a list of the checks. So it's one more step for us. And I learned the hard way, if you write checks for a small office and you hand it to somebody because they're waiting on it, and they go to the bank to cash it, the system works because they won't honor the check until they get that file from me. That happened, I think, with one of our teachers. It's just, I never thought about it, that she would just go immediately to the bank, but it was after school, so. But good point of that is it works. So, nothing for us to worry about, but for you to worry about. I'll keep you posted on the fees, just a matter of pride. Increase in maintenance and repairs, $38,000. Some of that's just repairing doors that, now we're moving over to North Clinton. We've replaced three, and I was told everything went well. I haven't had a chance to inspect, but I will. It's, AA Glass is a good company, they, they work with us, they understand our schools and what we need. We've had some plumbing repairs. Fire alarm horn strobes at South will be installed in every classroom.
That was a fire marshal mandate. The fire alarm at South Clinton, he said decibel-wise, did not meet the criteria and was not loud, loud enough. And so in order to increase, increase the sound to where it can be clearly heard in classrooms, we've had to add some new strobes.
And I will, I will take the heat on that one. I quoted this out, I met with two contractor, two providers of this service. We went with the least expensive, that was not proprietary components, meaning anybody can provide the components. If you use Siemens or Johnson Controls, you're married to them for repairs and maintenance, so you pay whatever their rate is. So the difference in the two bids was about $38, $3900, and I went with the lower one. But now we have to buy these strobes so they're loud enough and put them in the classrooms. I suppose if I knew more about fire alarm control systems, I probably could have negotiated or avoided it, so I apologize for that. I'll take the blame on that one. In the end, we're not paying any more money than the highest quote if we went with Siemens. I think we'll achieve some savings by not having to pay their exorbitant fees for repair. And I think that fire control panel was the original, the reason we replaced it, that they didn't make parts for it anymore. The largest one on there is an increase in HVAC equipment for $125,000. That is replacing nine in-wall units at South Clinton with five rooftop units. The classroom, why it's not even, it's nine and five, 10 classrooms share units, so one unit for two classrooms. One of the classrooms, the tech lab, had a mini-split system in there we installed. And so that's why it is nine in-wall units that we're replacing. We're going to take that mini-split and bring it to North and use it there. But that, South Clinton is completely rooftop now. We don't have any of the problematic through-wall units. Any questions on General Purpose School Fund budget? The next is federal projects. We have a new grant. It's called the Epidemiology and Laboratory Capacity Grant.
We say ELC.
ELC. It is, you know, we have Title I, Title II, Title III, Title IV. Now, those all have sub-funds, so 940, if we say 940, that's a sub-fund for federal projects, and that is to pay for medical personnel, which we already have. And we're, I think we're paying some stipends, and we're, are we supplanting a little bit of salary?
We are.
Okay, good.
So the grant, this is why it's allowing us to give the COVID tests, which have gone extremely well since Christmas. We actually have caught several kids who, whose parents called in the morning and said, "I'm just really unsure if they should come to school or not." Nurse pops out to the car, gives a COVID test. Several of them have popped positive, and they get to go back home without exposing other kids, which alleviates us from contact tracing and keeps healthy kids in school. So we've seen some good, some good results from the COVID testing, but this grant is part of a flow-through federal grant through the state, and so we're using it to purchase the COVID tests. Then we're giving the nurses a stipend to actually order the tests. They have to enter it into the database, they have to test the lots, they're staying after school to test. So we're giving them a stipend to take on this additional duty. But the nice thing about this grant is what we don't spend on COVID tests, we can actually continue to use the excess money to pay for existing nurses' salaries, which then will save us money in GP that we can put those funds towards the South Clinton addition. So it's kind of a win-win, a win-win for us. Those grant, this grant will run out June 30th, and so we will have expended all of that money by June 30th.
And you'll see that it says $123,000 increase in medical personnel expense. That's not all stipends. That's just, I think Kelly, this grant actually expires in 2023. Anyway, that money can be moved forward. I thought it did. Long story short, we can, when we figure out at the end what the net effect is on General Purpose School Fund, that'd be a budget amendment to reduce those salaries in that fund. I generally don't like to do that right now when we don't know exactly what those numbers would be.
We don't know exactly how much we're going to spend on COVID tests. I mean, right now, if we're testing quite a bit, but we're in the peak, so we may end up spending more than what we budgeted. So technically, what we don't spend on COVID testing is going to go towards nursing salaries. We just won't know what that breakout's going to be just yet.
So the conservative way is to leave the expense on the books until we know that we can reduce it, by what amount. And then there's no recommended budget amendment in cafeteria fund. I will probably have one to go ahead and increase our revenues and expenditures because we are serving a lot more meals this year compared to prior years. And revenues will grow more than the expense. As I indicated earlier, I do anticipate a good surplus in our cafeteria fund, but, so that budget amendment will be forthcoming. Any questions?
All right, thank you, Mr. Ray. I'll entertain a motion to approve Budget Amendment Number Four as presented.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further questions or comments from Mr. Ray? Hearing none, Kim, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes.
Lori Wilson.
Yes.
Kim Bobble.
Yes.
Molly Cross.
Yes.
Joey Smith.
Yes.
Curtis Smith.
Motion carries. There's no new business to come before the board, so we'll move on into reports and information.
Okay, Leigh Anne, did I promise to start with you this time? I thought I did last month, so come on up, Ms. Bunsteele. You get to share all the news firsthand.
By the time I get up there, you guys have heard the three separate messages. So we attended the ORA semester, and our ELCs, our teachers are processing on each of these success criteria, so that we can make sure our students, not only can they answer, "What am I learning? Why am I learning it?", but also, "How will I know I've learned it?". Because our end goal is for our students to take complete ownership of their learning, because we know that leads to more growth and higher achievement. We are going to be participating in something called the Great Kindness Challenge during the weekend of January 24th through 28th. So just kind of putting a spotlight on acts of kindness. So our kiddos are going to have checklists that they can complete and check off as they do certain acts of kindness around the school and at home. They can turn in the names of their friends who they catch being kind, and I'm going to recognize those people on morning announcements. We're going to have a different kindness quote every morning, and each student in our class is going to complete a kindness square, and we're going to have a mural of helping hands that we're going to display in the school. So we'll post pictures of that as it gets completed, and we're excited about that. Our virtual read day is going to be planned for March 4th, so we're going to do that virtually again. So for those of you that participated and sent us a video of yourself reading a favorite story last year, that's how we're going to do it again this year, and it worked out really well. So I'm sure Whitney Hopkins, she's in charge of that, will be contacting some of you if you would like to volunteer your time to read a story and record it and send it to us. The kids always like to see new faces and see somebody different besides their teacher reading them a story. And also, I just wanted to say thank you to some different organizations that helped provide Christmas assistance for lots of our families. We were able to fulfill needs for everybody that indicated that they needed help at Christmas time. So thank you to ORAU, Second Baptist Church, First Baptist Church, and the Clinton Rotary Club. Thank you, Ms. Bunsteele. Joey Smith said that he would definitely like to read Dr. Seuss' Fox and Sox, because he loves all of those rhyming words and how fun they are to pronounce. Are you in, Joey?
Sure.
All right, Ms. Abby?
I have my notes on, copy them along with, this is the great expectation for today. She's still one of those guys?
You're running the school by yourself this week, it's all good.
We're doing great things, and that's the least of things, and we're good. But I want to do a big shout-out to the Rotary Club, who helped us, have a little speak Christmas this year, along with help from ORAU, and Second Baptist and First Baptist, too. It's always so fun to watch them, get to meet Santa, and get to get something from Santa, and they, they're just so appreciative, and so are our families. We held, completed our data meetings to evaluate mid-year IREDA with teachers today. Had a really insightful, reflective conversations, and we could already see the wheels turning from grade levels coming through with things that they're already implementing, and then just ideas they gleaned from each other to how to carry on what was already doing very well in the first semester and tweak what needs to be changed, so we can continue to meet those needs as we round out and start the second semester. We are beginning the process of brainstorming our IREDDY incentive challenge that we do on the training typically. We see a great boom in response from kids for this. Last year, we centered around Clinton, brought in several landmarks from Clinton as part of our journey. Kids were able to earn treats or rewards that represented our town, and we got a great appreciation for that, and our teachers did a wonderful job just getting to bring a piece of our hometown into it as well. I wanted to say congratulations to Mindy Wilson, she's our CDC teacher at Clinton Elementary School, and she was approved for a $1,000 grant from the Education Foundation. And the money she applied for is going towards adding more sensory items to her classrooms for her friends, and she was approved for that, so we're super proud of her. And then last but not least, I did want to make a shout-out to Ms. Kristen King, our nurse, who has balanced very beautifully this added COVID testing piece along with her normal nurse duties without a single complaint, has handled it graciously. Our teachers and students and parents of students have been very appreciative just to have this readily available, and it just makes it that much easier when you're having to make several decisions about how to carry on, carry the classroom, get kids taken care of, and Kristen has done a beautiful job with that. So we very much appreciate the grant and our nurse's willingness to do that.
Thank you, Ms. Kidwell.
Thank you.
Ms. Ryle?
I'm also going to say thank you to several organizations who helps our students through Christmas. We had Faith Promise Church had an event, All Is Bright, and students, students' parents got to come in and do a little Christmas shopping for them while the kids got to play and, and do something a little bit separate, and they had dinner together. And then Second Baptist Church also is always very good to us, and Clinton Rotary Club, we also say thank you, and we had several anonymous donors who always take very good care of our, our families at Christmas. I want to recognize Shannon Cook and Kelly Reed. They applied for and received a grant, $600, from Tanger Grants for Kids. There was a little, something that ET had taken all these, ET's Tammy had taken these donations of golf clubs, and we had a couple of teachers, Shannon Cook and Kelly Reed, and he had had a conversation about what a great opportunity it would be to have some kind of Blaze Golf Events. And so they got out the donated clubs one day last spring, and they were letting the kids hit the balls, and they literally had a ball. And so after that, Shannon and Kelly applied for this grant and received this grant, and it's going to be a clinic that will be held this spring. Right now, it's just for 4th through 6th grade students at North Clinton, but we really want to make sure that we open it up all the way, since it is just a golf clinic, to, hopefully, will be a Blaze activity coming soon. But we want to say congratulations to those ladies and to ET for always... But we want to say congratulations to those ladies and to ET for always having great visions for our students. I want to talk about, we had a virtual family event called our, our Art and Literacy Night. And we had a lot of fun. We had about forty-five families that participated online. It was a lot of fun. We had a woven ornament that we made. There were some recorded music and songs from classes and orphelium ensemble. And our band students, they all contributed songs to play and sing. And then we had Ms. Pack and Ms. Jackson read 'Twas the Night Before Christmas in front of a little fireplace, fake fireplace, but it was lovely nonetheless. And we had some bingo playing and the students received some art. Every student that participated was able to be, had their name in a drawing. And so we drew names and every student that won a prize got a book and something related to art. So they were very excited about that. We had about thirty prizes that we gave out to students that participated that night. And of course, we sent them some hot cocoa and peppermints to go along with their art materials. I do want to mention that we had some mid-year data from I-Ready came in after our benchmarks for I-Ready in December. And we had typically our mid-year growth, we want to see about fifty percent growth, about fifty percent all the way through the year. In May, we're looking to have a hundred percent growth for a hundred percent of the year. So our math, I-Ready percentages this year or this, this time at midterm was eighty-three percent growth. And our reading growth was ninety-one percent. So definitely surprised, pleasantly surprised, but we're really proud of all the hard work. And not, notwithstanding anything that's going on in the rest of the world, we're in there digging and getting lots of things done and growing our sweet babies.
Thank you, Ms. Ryle.
Thank you. Great news.
I think one of the cool things we've seen with North Clinton is we've always said that COVID has changed some things for the better. And particularly, every community school is different. But the virtual events at North Clinton have been one of the most tremendous things. The level of involvement of the North Clinton families with virtual just skyrockets. They love it. And so I think just once they get it home at night, they just enjoy being able to tap in, tap in virtually. But I've got to observe one of her virtual events, not this past one. But just the number of parents participating with kids online was just, it was, it was amazing. So I think that's one of the things that you'll see at North Clinton, that even post-COVID, we continue to, to offer some online things just because the response has been so large. That concludes our reports.
All right. Please take note down in information there that our next school board meeting will be February the tenth. It will be here. Last item I'm going to draw your attention to is the disclosure of interest is due by the state by the thirty-first. So if you have not had the opportunity to list your disclosure of interest, go ahead and please do that. Can do we get a notification from TSBA or anything as to?
About the disclosure?
Yes, do we?
I think Kelly sent a link to where you could.
Right. I mean, do we know, does everybody know if you've, if you've done that or not? I know I did mine in December. It's been a while.
It tells you. It tells when you submit it.
I've done one.
You get a confirmation number.
Hundred percent attendance then. Good, good. All right. That closes up reports and information. We'll move on to our director's report.
Okay, a couple of, sat down to David, a couple of Clinton City updates. Of the South Clinton addition is Fast and Furious underway. Scott and I held our first, we're going to be meeting bi-weekly with the contractor or the construction team and architect team just to kind of get an update on where we are. But that has gone well. We've gotten our schedule of events. It looks well planned. If all goes on schedule, we should be ready to rock and roll and open up that addition at the beginning of next school year. Just anticipating some supply chain issues. Scott did give the go-ahead for the flooring and some of, some of the other construction supplies that we're worried about possibly delaying the schedule of events. We have given the contractor permission to go ahead and get those ordered. We'll go ahead and pay for them and we'll either store them. We've got a room set aside at South Clinton. We'll be taking away where the teachers eat, but that'll be a little momentary, little inconvenience for a little while. But we'll use that room to store any of the things that they can go ahead and order to get here just so that we're not thrown off and, and end up delaying with our opening. Some pretty big news occurred this afternoon. If you have not heard in the news, the Supreme Court finally ruled on the OSHA mandate that was going to require us to mandate vaccines for all of our employees or do weekly testing. They actually overturned that. They kept it for healthcare workers, but they overturned the OSHA mandate that we would be subject to. So therefore, Clinton City employees will not be mandated to get a vaccine or be subject to weekly testing as per that Supreme Court ruling. So we've been waiting for several months to see how that has played out. And as always, we try to have Plan A, B, and C in our, in our minds. And so we've been working hard at Central Office in case that came into fruition. We had tried to prepare our employees and tried to have a plan of how we would implement that. But it looks as if we will not be required to do so. To already talked a little bit about our COVID testing, it is going extremely well. We are very thankful. I don't know how we would have survived these past two, two years without the three fabulous nurses that we have. We are just very, very blessed with Katie, Amanda, and Kristen, who just always are just willing to take on whatever task that we throw their way. And out of all, I will have to say that they have, hands down, had the hardest job of anybody in the system if they've tried to determine COVID symptoms and what to do and just trying to keep up with the CDC guidance is a, is a full-time job as it changes quite frequently. We are, out of a, you know, just an effort to be transparent, we are seeing a slight uptick in how COVID is affecting our schools at this time. I think that's not a Clinton City issue. We're seeing that all over the nation. The good news is that the symptoms appear to be very mild and short-lived. But we are seeing an uptick in the number of students that are testing positive. We are continuing to follow CDC guidelines. They do change very frequently. Jamie keeps a copy of it in her purse so that she can pull it out at any given time. And she commits it to memory. I've given up. I don't even try to keep up with it anymore. I just look at Jamie and ask her what we need to do. But we are pleased with the CDC limited the five-day quarantine from ten days to five days. The positives still are not impacting us to a great degree in Clinton City schools. What impacts us is, is we are continuing to contact trace. And if you are exposed, you go home on a quarantine. That is what is impacting our attendance. And, you know, I, I get, you can imagine when you contact trace and eight to ten of your kids have gone home for five days, how that impacts your ability to carry on with new instruction. So we just keep, we keep preaching to the teachers that we are all swimming in a sea of grace and mercy, that we are not miracle workers, that we can just do what we can do with the situation that has been given to us. And we're just going to try to do the best we can do, knowing that when half of your class has gone home for five days, even if you're trying to deliver instruction virtually, that cannot take the place of that kid sitting in that seat in the classroom. So we are just, we're buckling down. We are going to ride this wave. And hopefully, it will be over within a few weeks and we can return to some sense of normalcy. I have been asked by several people if we intend on going virtual. And I have no intentions of moving a school or a system to virtual instruction unless we had no other options. We will, at this point, we're able to cover classes. At this point, we are able to continue school. Some classes are experiencing more absences than others. But we've lived through it for two years and so we're going to, we're just going to continue pledging away. And we want to keep the building open for healthy kids so that healthy kids can come to school and be in a safe, warm place with two hot meals a day. So we are committed, we are very committed to keeping it open unless we're just forced to do otherwise. So we do, as part of the S.R. plan, we have to update our health and safety plan that is on the website every six months. They do require that we receive stakeholder input on that plan. Basically, our plan is just that we are following CDC and Tennessee Department of Health guidelines, that we are collaborating with the Health Department. We are reporting positive cases. We are contact tracing. We are doing everything that the health officials say that we should be doing as a school system. And so that is, that is basically our plan. And we are, if you are quarantined or isolated, we are continuing to offer you distance learning. Whether you, as long as you complete your work that the teacher has assigned, then you are allowed to be counted as present in a distance learning. So anyone who happened to be listening to this on TV or any board members, if you have any feedback on how you feel like we should tweak that plan or any additional feedback that you want to give, you're welcome to give that to me or to Jamie Jordan. But we will be just posting that health and safety plan, the revised plan of what I just said on February the first on our website. As Scott stated, the South Clinton HVAC project is complete. Hopefully, we will not be constantly doing repairs at South Clinton. We know that we've, we've trudged a long road with those air condit-, or those HVAC units, which have not been quite what we wanted them to be. So we're appreciative for Powell Brothers for overseeing that project, doing it over the course of Christmas to where it did not impact instruction and they did a great job. The school funding discussion continues. I left the copy of what has been released on my desk, but I will email that to you all tonight. But it is available on the department's website. We don't know a whole lot more information now than we knew before, other than there will be a student base amount per kid that we have enrolled and there will be certain weights attached to that child if they are special ed, if they are ELL, if they are economically disadvantaged. The two pieces of additional feedback based on this that I will be giving on behalf of Clinton City Schools is of course, the cost differential, cost differential factor that I emailed you all about. I have to ask Scott what that's called every time. But thank you all for submitting that feedback. I will be submitting that again on behalf of Clinton City Schools. And then right now, in their proposed plan, they have an outcomes-based weight, which is basically a performance measure weight to if you meet a performance standard that you would get additional money. But right now, all of those performance standards are high school-based. So it is your graduation rate. It is your college career. None of those are elementary-based. And so I'm of the opinion that we're missing out on a pot of money being the tenth district in the state out of one-hundred-and-forty-six districts. I'm not scared of performance measures. Give me some performance measures because we'll meet them and we could get additional money. So I'm going to be advocating for the K through, we're not the only K through six district. There's multiple K through eight districts across the state. And we need to have some performance measures attached to us as well so we have the opportunity to earn those additional funds. So I will be submitting that. ET continues to be at Knoxville Rehabilitation Hospital, working very, very hard on his three hours of intense therapy. We are working to do a surprise home renovation for him so that he has widened doorways, a handicap bathroom, and some ramps when he returns. And so the community has just really come together to support him, who has done, I don't even, I could go on and on for what he's done for Clinton City Schools and for the kids who have come through Clinton City Schools. He's just an amazing part of our community and amazing part of our Blaze program and amazing part of all Clinton City Schools, but particularly North Clinton, where he is seen fist bumping and high-fiving a lot of the kids. And, and it's just kind of hard to kind of walk by his office right now and see the lights, the lights off there. But Jimmy Taylor with Apple Blossom has agreed ET loved his pancake break, he loves his pancake breakfast. There's nothing more than he loves than doing a pancake breakfast with the Blaze. And so we're going to do a pancake breakfast in his honor. And Jimmy Taylor is going to donate all of the supplies, materials, and food for that. So that's going to be on January the twenty-ninth from eight o'clock to eleven o'clock. He's going to be offering not only pancakes, but you have your choice, a pancakes and sausage or biscuit and gravy and sausage. So the biscuit and gravy, that's what I'm going to be there going for. But we also have some special T-shirts that Jimmy Andrews is making for us right now that you have seen what is on the Blaze, but it says Blaze, the house that ET built. So we will be selling those at the pancake breakfast. And all of those proceeds will go straight into his home renovations. And then later that evening, the Fire and Police Department are going to be, they're going to be doing their annual Fire and Police game. If you have never seen that, it gets very, very intense. At times, it makes Roger very nervous. And so it is definitely worthy. You have been there. You've seen. It can get pretty hefty. And I will say, the Police Department has already asked to practice four times. So I anticipate getting a phone call from the Fire Department wanting their nights in the gym here pretty quickly. But all the donations from that game are also going to go to ET. So then we're holding our own staff-student annual ballgame on Monday, the thirty-first. And so this year, we have additional opportunities for the staff to participate. Not only can you play basketball with the boys and girls, but you also can cheer or you can dance. And so Leanne was going to cheer. I think I've talked her into dancing. So she's going to dance with me. We're going to dance. Yes, I'm going to be a dancer. Abby's going to be a cheerleader and Monica's going to play basketball. She's going to be on the basketball team. So, so several teachers have said, I don't want to participate, but I do want a T-shirt. And I'm like, you don't get the T-shirt unless you participate. You got it, you got to participate to have the T-shirt. So anyway, that is going to be loads and loads of fun. The kids are excited. We are excited. And we have a pretty hefty number of staff members participating this year. So that is going to be super fun. And then finally, we are having lots and lots of babies in Clinton City schools. And so we have several teachers out on maternity leave this semester. So I just wanted you to get familiar. I did not ask these people to come to introduce them to you tonight because I know that they are exhausted trying to get their feet underneath themselves of joining Clinton City Schools. But Erin Collier, fifth-grade teacher at South Clinton, is out this semester on maternity leave. And Daryl Long is actually going to fill in for her this semester. Courtney Haygood is currently filling in for Taylor Bailey's maternity leave. She is a fifth-grade teacher at Clinton Elementary School. And then with our sweet, dear friend Tammy Pack retiring in December, we have hired Courtney Case and she will take over Tammy's fourth-grade classroom. And then finally, Casey Massengill is our librarian at Clinton Elementary School. And she's taking a semester off from maternity leave. We have restructured and we're doing some makerspace activities. So actually, Alyssa Bowling, one of our current TAs, and Tracy Burton, our technology teacher, are going to work in the library this semester and do makerspace slash library things with the students. And then we have hired Candace Moore as a teaching assistant. She will take over Alyssa Bowling's intervention for this semester. So as of now, knock on wood, we are fully staffed. I can't believe that's come out of my mouth. I'll just regret saying that tomorrow. But right now, we are fully staffed and things are running smoothly at Clinton City Schools. Any questions for me? We are super excited to have Lori join us and we are super excited, David Queener, that you are back with us. It's good to see you. That concludes.
All right. Does anybody else have anything else? Again, welcome, Lori. I hope your first board meeting went well.
Thank you. It did.
Stayed longer than, than I thought we would, but with that, I will declare this meeting adjourned.